We don't have a clock.
You can't have that.
It's six twenty-eight.
Okay.
Good. I got the year to be named.
I have a great hope. You choose it all.
I'm usually called person. That's an exhausting question. I mean, we got four. It doesn't even want to let you know. Well, I'm racing. We have a meeting up right. What do I call these? Now we know. How long I talked to this morning? They gave us all to give the benefit. Yeah. We had an option of a little bit. They got some coffee. I'm shocked that I'm not sure. All right, that's not what I missed. Nothing else.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for coming. Today is Wednesday, February twelve, twenty twenty-five, at six thirty. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Can we have Deputy Clerk Wees give the roll call, please?
Ellis? Ramsey?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Ockins?
Here.
Lauren?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Morrison?
Here.
Berchini?
Here.
Fredo? Edor?
Here.
Or?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Or?
Here.
And Mr. Allen said he was going to try to be remotely, but he was busy and couldn't make it here. Sit down.
I move we excuse Councilmember Fredo. Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I move we excuse Councilmember Representative Allen.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Here he is.
Oh, there he is online. Okay. Be done that. Okay, so I'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Could you stand for that?
I. By the United States of America and a sincere republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Council President Swor.
Would like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Second.
Is there any discussion on that? Council President Swor.
I would like to ask the council to entertain a motion to add a brief discussion at the end of our slated agenda this evening regarding the possibility of changing the day of the week we hold these meetings.
Second. The person seconded to change the or to open a discussion into changing the date of our council meetings, is there any discussion?
What day?
Open to discuss, to be discussed. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay.
Motion to approve the amendment as agenda or the agenda as amendment.
Second. Is there any discussion? I'm all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose? Now we'll go on to public comment. Please start with your word in your name and keep it civil and down to three minutes. All right. Hello.
Good evening. I'm Ruth Hamilton. I live in Hoquiem. I'm the president of the Board of History nine eight five two oh, formerly known as the Friends of the Aberdeen Museum. I hold a master's degree in museum studies from the John F. Kennedy University Center for Museum Studies, San Francisco. I'm a member of the Association for State and Local History and the Washington Museum Association. I served on the city museum board until it was dissolved, and I've served as the registrar of the Paulson Museum for the past five years. I'm also the team leader at the museum recovery warehouse. I'm only part of the History nine eight five two oh team, however. Our group includes award-winning educators, project managers, and visionaries with experience in entertainment, production, government service, business, and more. Our youngest board member is fifteen. Our oldest is eighty. We're experienced, dedicated, and enthusiastic, and we want to bring all of that to the new museum. We also want to bring people to Aberdeen and share the vibrant, multi-layered, multifaceted history that is Aberdeen, and not just here, but beyond the city limits. Since some of you may be unfamiliar with History nine eight five two oh, I've provided you with a copy of our organization brief that grew out of our strategic planning process. One page overview of our activities. We can do without a museum. Imagine what we could do with one. I leave you with a challenge. I understand that city council and city staff are overworked. Your plates are full. But what can you, as a city council, do to help us bring a new museum to Aberdeen? Help us help you. Help us help you.
Thank you. Excuse me, is there anybody else?
Hello, Deb Wilson, Ward one. I'm going to read you what I read to the legislators, and then I'll thank you guys. District nineteen, it's sad that we have to plead with people we elected to help us. I'm representing numerous senior citizens and others on fixed incomes. We pay rent on the dirt under our homes in our community, manufactured home community. Our owner has continued to increase our rent yearly from four eighty-five and twenty-one to seven fifty-plus garbage and twenty-four, a sixty-plus percent increase. And then since August of twenty-four, we're also paying water and sewer. Services and upkeep to our park have been dramatically reduced. The unknown increase amount has folks fearing for their lives daily. Economic evictions are real. Homelessness is real, as you all know. Imagine waking every day, wondering if it's your turn to become homeless. A tsunami of elderly and disabled and bedridden folks are headed your way. The answer is please support House Bill twelve seventeen and Senate Bill five two two two. I want to thank you for all the help that you guys have given us as far as city ordinances go and let you know that we need all the votes we can get from the Senate. The Senate is our sticking point this year. We're so close to passing rent stability, and everybody in our park needs it. I mean, people stress out constantly. They're just heartbroken. We're still waiting to hear if our rent's going to be over three percent, and you guys thankfully gave them a hundred and twenty days to give us notice, which was February second, and we've not heard a word. So we're hoping it'll be less than three percent, but knowing our landlord, they're probably going to try to raise it as much as they can and then say, well, take us to court about it. And then in the meantime, if we don't pay, it's a fourteen-day eviction notice, which again stresses out all the people in the park. So thank you for your support. If you can contact senators or even the representatives, I know that Walsh and McIntyre and Wilson are not supporting us at all, even though we've told them sob story after sob story. But if everybody would just speak up and let people, friends know to speak up and sign in pro on those bills, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move on. Council President Swor.
Motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the January twenty-ninth meeting, accounts payable and payroll, including checks numbered two six one eight three through two six one eight four, eight eight five five zero through eight eight seven five eight, NYR seventeen sixty-one through seventeen seventy-three.
Second. Is there any discussion? Aye, man? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Yes.
Hey, I have a mayor's report, and I probably didn't bring it, so I'll wing it a little bit. So I went to a breakfast this morning for the port and listened to them for an hour and a half, tell us how wonderful the port is. And let me tell you, we have a wonderful port. And I took down some notes because their executive director, Leonard Barnes, is really a good wordsmith, and I liked the way he talks, so I'm going to try and maybe can steal some ideas. Anyway, it was really good. It was wonderful to hear about the new jobs coming our way for our community, and it was, I was really impressed to see how much expansion that we're going to be having on the harbor here as far as train and exports kind of thing. So it's really exciting. I think we're moving into a wonderful phase in our community. I just thought that was worth sharing with you folks.
Council reports, do we have any else? Councilperson Morris?
I have a couple. So I also attended the Port of Grace Harbor tenth annual business report this morning. Some of the speakers included Port Commissioner Phil Papick, Executive Director Leonard Barnes, and then representatives from Lynch Creek Farms, Pasha Automotive, Life Flight, and AGP. Few quick facts that I jotted down. They're the number one commercial seafood landing port in the state. That's at Westport. They have four deep-water terminals. They operate marine terminals, piloted services, industrial properties. The SATS of Business Park, Westport Marina, Bowerman Airport, and Friends Landing. It was inspiring to see all the collaboration, development, and achievements that have been taking place. The Port of Grace Harbor really is a world-class port and an asset to the community. I also got this little pamphlet that they handed out today. I'll grab the one, so I'll pass it down. You guys can take a look at it. It's really interesting information in there. The other thing that I wanted to talk about, I received an email inquiry from Councilmember Ellis today, given the cold weather and just wanting to know what the county homeless task force is doing. So the county homeless task force, one, I wish I had a better report to give to you. I don't, but I will tell you what I know. As you guys know, committees and boards, they serve an advisory role. So we're not ourselves taking any action, and we haven't met since this cold weather snap has been going on, but here's what I can tell you. So the previous commission last year prioritized homelessness prevention and rental assistance as well as the hotel motel voucher program. It's been very difficult to get people to submit proposals for cold weather shelter that meet, you know, all the standards put in place. The county received a consolidated homeless grant that provides rental and facility support for households experiencing or at risk of experiencing homelessness, housing and essential services, coordinated entry landlord liaison, rapid rehousing, and those, the provider for that is CAP. So county gets the money. It's sent to CAP, okay? The previous commission, they really prioritized hotel motel vouchers, which is also administered by CAP. Priority is given to veterans, elderly, disabled, medically fragile, and families. So what the task force is really working on, the five-year plan, I've talked to you guys about this before, and short, mid, and long-term strategies to address chronic homelessness, homelessness prevention, and facilitate getting services and infrastructure in place to address the challenges and needs of the community. We have two new commissioners this year. I've talked to both. They have both prioritized bringing more housing units of all kinds, including affordable housing to the harbor. Both seem eager to address this issue. We really do need to work on those relationships, getting people to apply for cold weather shelter services. It's too late in the year this year to do that. You guys know these proposals and things, and the process for it, it's lengthy. Typically with the RFPs for cold weather shelter, they, the last few years, it's been later in the season, probably too late, but in the past, it is, you know, late summer, early fall, they start that RFP process for wintertime. I'm hopeful that it's going to begin in earnest late summer this time. I really do think that the commissioners that we have now are going to maintain the services that the previous commission, they really focused on the hotel motel vouchers. They really focused in on eviction prevention, and those are good. Those are much needed in our community, and the funds keep getting infused for those things. But I also think that what these commissioners particularly, there will be like a pivot towards shelter services. I really think that's a priority for them. So I don't have any hard numbers about how much funding that the county has given to these right now. I got that email at the last minute today. I will get those numbers. And hopefully we can, we can have commissioners or one or two of them here to talk about kind of where they want to go for this next year. And I should be having a homeless housing task force meeting in the coming weeks, and I hope to have a more thorough report for you the next time we meet.
All right, thank you. That was wonderful. My little comment here would be I'd love to see more of what she just did, coming from all of the council folks. You're, you're all on commissions and just cut in here. I did bring the list of commissions, and there are a lot of vacancies. And at the beginning of my term, I'd asked if any council folks would be interested in being on those, and so they're still available. And so if anybody wants to look at the list, I have it. It's also online, or we can talk about maybe not Stan, but somebody else being on some of our committees. Okay. Any other councilperson?
Last Sunday, I volunteered my time with two other volunteers to clean up all their creaks off Cushion Street. I volunteered, let me know that the area was trashed. And her and my friend, and I cleaned it up. There was twenty-five bags of garbage. It was four hundred and sixty-one pounds that I could weigh. And a half dozen syringes, couple shopping carts, three towers, and a seat out of a car. So I just want to mention, thank you Cynthia Garcia of the Harbor Strong Coalition and Nathan Erath of Fish and Wildlife for helping out cleaning up the area. And also thank you for Public Works for disposing of that litter. I also met with Director Barnum to start planning a cleanup with Aberdeen, Scotland, a cleanup of Aberdines around the world, scheduled over June twentieth, ten o'clock to noon. None of my others will join us.
I dusted my kilt off. I'm going. Get one of those picker things so I don't have to stoop over. Thank you. Any other counsel?
Okay, let's move on to staff reports with City Administrator Ruth Clements.
Thank you, Mayor. It was brought up a couple of meetings ago about the Railroad Noise Reduction Committee that we had secured two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Of that would require a sixty thousand dollar match from the city, included in the transportation benefit district project plans that you'll, that is going before a public hearing, is included, a fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollars of that sixty thousand dollar match included in there, so it will not impact our general fund. It would come out of that particular fund, which is restricted to transportation projects, which this is included, which this is considered a transportation project. Last night, or excuse me, Monday night, the city of Hoquiem, their city council, because one of the railroad crossings is in the city of Hoquiem, they agreed to, their city council agreed to pay for one-sixth of that, so ten thousand dollars of that will be going. So Hoquiem will be partnering with us on this. And so I just wanted to put that before you, like when you're considering voting for that, that is one of the things that you will be approving is are the matching funds for the railroad noise reduction project. We were selected by Business View Magazine, who wants to do a, an article, a large article, probably the entire magazine, on the city of Aberdeen and the projects, the infrastructure projects that we have going on, and the revitalization efforts that our city is making. So I will have more information for you as that, as that happens. I'm just having right now preliminary interviews with the editor and the folks that are, that will be doing the stories on Aberdeen. But they were very intrigued by the story of Kurt Cobain and Aberdeen being his hometown as well. They felt that that was a pretty cool element to include in part of the city's revitalization efforts. I had received an email from Tanika Watford, who is the CEO of the Moore Wright Group, who had told me that the cold weather shelter that they were hosting is temporarily closed for the next couple of weeks due to vandalism that occurred, and they have to have some professional cleaning done and replacement of some things. So just wanted to give you, so I think at this point, there is really no cold weather shelter in Aberdeen. So yeah, that's it. Are there any questions for me? Yes. In the Public Safety Committee, we were actually discussing House Bill thirteen eighty, and I heard that you testified about that. I was hoping that you could share that with the council a little bit about your testimony.
Right before our meeting here, I was, I testified before the House Appropriations Committee on House Bill thirteen eighty, which is a bill that would basically allow camping again within city limits and leaves it up to cities. It kind of, it's not a good bill. It's too ambiguous and vague for our police officers to enforce. And it would, like I said, once again, allow public camping again in public right-of-ways, not state properties, city right-of-ways, by the way. When asked if this would impact state properties, the answer was no. So it's very poor-written legislation. It would set us back from all the hard work that we've been able to do in the last year and also would not hold people compassionately accountable. One of the things that I stated in my testimony was that we, when we removed the encampment, when we removed the camp downtown, there were about two hundred people that we offered shelter beds and treatment bed spaces too, and none of those people took the bed spaces. They opted to leave town, which to me indicates that we have a problem, not necessarily that's a homeless issue, but one that's rooted in addiction and mental illness. So that this particular House bill is not, does not solve homelessness, does not solve mental, you know, health issues, or does not solve addiction issues. It is just to render cities helpless and to not enforce our laws. Yeah, so that was the testimony, and I wasn't the only city there. City of Bellevue, Vancouver, Spokane, Kent, Mercer Island, many, many cities. I left early because I had to get to this meeting, but many other cities behind me were ready to testify as well, so. And, and I did send letters to our nineteenth and twenty-fourth district representatives, both our senators and representatives, and to the appropriation committee, and to the everyone on the appropriation committee. Another note is that as Director Barnum and I will be meeting with Representative Theringer on Friday to discuss the funding for the museum building. The museum building funding is set to expire June of this year, and so we have a strategy that we are going to just kind of play out. We created a communication strategy and to work with our legislators to ensure that this funding is kept into the next biennium budget. It is in there currently, so it's there for them to remove, but we want to make sure that it remains there. So talking to Representative Theringer, who is the Capitol Budget Chair for the House, is the exact person we need to talk to. He's also a representative on the Heritage Committee as well. Yes.
I think it was back in October, council.
Can you push it in? Oh.
Sorry. She broke.
Okay.
I think it was back in October, council approved having our lobbyists speak on behalf of affordable housing measures in the legislature. So was Aberdeen represented when the bills that Ms. Wilson mentioned? Yeah, HB twelve seventeen and SB fifty-two twenty-two, when there was time for testimony for those?
No, we didn't direct our lobbyists to speak on behalf of affordable housing. The only time that we have an agreement with the city of Hoquiem that we will not go after any funding, and we will agree upon how to use the lobbyists, since that's a bill that we split with them. The one time that Hoquiem had agreed to allow us to use the lobbyists for affordable housing was when the city was considering building a homeless shelter and going after homeless trust fund money. So, and that truly was the only time.
See, thank you. I do have one more question, if that's all right. And I apologize if this has been mentioned before and I missed it. I know that there was a hangup with the other half of the levy money and the budget. Has that been resolved?
It has not been resolved. It looks like we have, you know, we're going to have to continue to lobby. We won't know until about April, and we will go back again and meet face to face and testify before the Senate and the House again. But yes, the, you are correct. The seventeen and a half million dollars that we were promised in the last biennium for the levy project was not included in this budget. So that forced us, City Administrator Brian Shea and myself, along with Commissioner Rains, who was representing the Chehalis Basin, Office of the Chehalis Basin, and Darren Rains, who is the CEO for Greater Grace Harbor, to go and testify before the House and the Senate. So to ask them to include the funding for the levy project, what the lobbyist was telling us was that it looked like there were a lot of nods in the audience and that the legislators looked like they were in favor of it, but we won't find out until we get closer to them actually writing the budget. So again, we'll have another push as we near, you know, the passage of the budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So as I understand, so the budget, the current budget that's been presented was put together and presented by former Governor Inslee, correct?
Correct.
So do we know why Governor Inslee chose to remove that from his budget for this next biennium?
I don't know outside of the fact that it was a promise and from legislators, and I don't know if that's a typical practice to promise money into another budget, but we just are going to hold them to it. And we have great representation. Like I said, Representative Steve Theringer is the chair on the House Capitol Committee, and that's a great position for our city to have that representation there.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Speaker Representative Allen's online. He had a report during council reports. We dismissed him.
Okay, come back to you. Go ahead.
Our T I S is, has Aberdeen experienced any hiccups with pass-through funding coming from the federal government that had been appropriated for any of our projects?
It was rescinded, but we did have a scare there for some of the funding, the brick funding for the levy project. Now, when it comes to the railroad project, the railroad noise reduction project, there is a possibility that could get cut, but we, because we haven't signed a contract yet. So we will see. But yes, the brick funding we were nervous about, yes, it was impacted, but again, it was rescinded. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we've gone to Director Street Report, then with Director Scott. Hold it, hang on there. Let's have, let's first go and get a report from our student council representative.
Let's first go and get a report from our student council representative.
A doctor there and had a report to give. Change of mind.
Counselor Allen, this needs to unmute, he's giving the report, right?
Maybe change.
Okay, so um we'll come back to him if we can, go ahead, Director Scott.
Thank you, um just before I get started on the update for the micro grants, um we're gonna do, Community Development will do a wrap-up from twenty-four at the uh next month during council meeting. Um, but what I wanted to say, because it kind of piggybacked on what Councilmember Morrison had said and what's been touched upon tonight about affordable housing. And I know we don't often toot our horns very much around here, but there's, there were some great incredible things that happened last year. And for those of you who've been around the harbor a long time, many years in a row Aberdeen went without any new housing starts. Um, I can't even tell you, we we do a lot of commercial development, but really outside of remodels, there were no new housing. So in twenty-four, we had a hundred and eighty new housing units that were added to our housing stock. So I wanted you to know that, because that's, that doesn't happen a lot, especially for a smaller community. And uh I'm pretty proud of our staff in getting that done, but a hundred and eighty new housing units, so that's incredible. And that's anywhere from new houses to eighty U's that were added for mother-in-laws or um young adults coming home from college, um garage conversions, manufactured homes. But yeah, a hundred and eighty new, and we're we're kicking it off this year already with more coming in. So I'm excited to see what this year will bring. So with that, last year in May, you guys had approved a grant of ten thousand dollars and with a partnership with Downtown Aberdeen Association in the cities, and you used your discretionary funds to do a micro grant program for um businesses in the downtown district. Uh, the placemaking micro grants, uh up to five hundred dollars per applicant, uh assisted businesses with exterior paint, lighting, signage, awnings, murals, planters, landscaping, speakers, et cetera. While the security micro grant, up to five hundred per applicant, would assist business of security cameras, window protection screenings, lighting, cameras, and alarms. So I've, Becca uh was kind enough to hand this out, so you can kind of see where we're at year-to-date. The ones that are down there are still in progress, but this has been a phenomenal program. And I know Will wanted to reach out and just really thank the mayor and city council for this opportunity. Um, it, and then he just wanted me to pass on a couple of things. And it does take time, as some businesses don't have the funds upfront for the cost, because how it typically works is a business will spend the money and get reimbursed through depart of, through Downtown Aberdeen Association, who then sends us an invoice, and then we reimburse them. Additional ideas needed to be developed to see um for businesses to consider, since this was a new program. Businesses needed approvals to look for additional time from building owners, contract or permits from the city. Um, some businesses struggled with English. Some businesses did their own project, which took time because they had to work around their normal day-to-day commitments. Most projects were above five hundred, so businesses needed to find extra funds, and one had to back out due to overall costs. And lastly, there are some projects businesses wanted to do but are hoping for larger grants as they move forward. Some of the considerations um D A would like is that if we continue this program, which we wholeheartedly hope the city will agree to do, is make larger grants up to maybe two hun- two thousand per per project, such as for painting the fronts of buildings or polishing marble fronts, or painting or replacing awnings. Continue with a portion of five hundred or more for security and small enhancements. Um, we, they did have one business outside of the the Business Improvement District that wanted to uh receive funding, but they weren't eligible since it was outside the district. So it may be something the city might want to look at extending. Um, also, um Downtown Aberdeen Association could partner with maybe the Good Neighbors Revolving Loan Fund to have independent vetting of projects to assist in grants, just to make it a little bit easier. And, but overall, these projects lifted the businesses, building owners, the city, the council, and Downtown Aberdeen Association in a better light to our community. And again, um they just wanted to express their overall thanks and gratitude to the city for that and hopefully encourage the council to continue this program in the future. And that was it. Any questions? Stan?
Thank you, Director Scott. Um, two questions. For those who um either had higher costs or would like to see higher amounts, like two thousand or so, were they, was it suggested to any of them, or were they directed to consider applying for the revolving loan fund? And maybe getting a small loan out of that fund to proceed with their project?
Yes, um, so the Director of D A A, Will, so he is on the board for um for the uh Good Neighbors Revolving Loan Fund. So yes, that played an integral part. I think some businesses were, you know, as always, taking a loan can be sometimes a little overwhelming. Um, even though our interest rates are spectacular and we do good things, um sometimes it's just that extra commitment can make a little bit more difficult.
Sure, and then I was curious, um I see a lot of these are for things like uh outdoor speakers, cameras, sandwich boards, windows, graphics, things like that. I was curious, under Dean Dogs, it says boat ride. Can you explain what, what is boat ride and how does that fit with this micro grant?
That's a really good question, and I don't know the answer to it. So I apologize, but I can find out.
I'll check into that. I mean, nobody invited me on boat ride.
Becca mentioned that he actually physically did get a boat and have boat rides within the store.
And it's historical to, there's a story with it, he has a board on it explaining the story and where it came from, and he redid the boat.
His store is pretty small.
Yeah, yeah, it's like a, from a ride, like a carnival ride size of a boat.
Okay, interesting, interesting.
Thanks, Becca. Councilmember Ellis.
Excuse me. Um, it looks like that there are five out of twenty-one of these that have to do with adding cameras. And, and I was hoping that this program would be used to, for repainting, adding things that really increase the vitality of downtown, not adding more cameras, although I can appreciate um especially a shop owner feeling very vulnerable having the camera is an important tool. But I would hope that the direction of these grants really go into increasing the vitality of our downtown.
Absolutely, I think when you guys approved the grants, you did approve five thousand for economic vitality in that regard and five thousand for security, um because at the time we were having issues. Um, we still do tend to have some issues in the downtown, it, you know, in alleyways in particular, it is dark. And people will find their ways into buildings. So um where, I I appreciate where you're coming from, and yes, I would love to see all economic vitality. Unfortunately, sometimes security measures are still needed. But I will pass that along to D A A, and most definitely, if you decide as a city council to fund this in the future, make that suggestion.
And it might be a um, a good indicator measure if over the years we see fewer uses for cameras and more uses for repainting and adding amenities.
Yeah, hallelujah, but thank you.
Councilmember Morrison?
Um, is there some sense from the businesses that did utilize this for security, if it made much of a difference for them? Dale, did you hear anything?
No, I think uh predominantly what I hear from the businesses when I go to their meetings is uh the enforcement of the cameras and lies has really been the driving point for that.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. I um I know I, I was on the library board, they were wanting cameras by the library because they were having issues with people trying to break in to the library. So I think there is a need for security. I think revitalization and security are walk hand in hand. You know, it's hard for people to want to come into Aberdeen if they don't feel secure. So I think security cameras are an important part of it.
All right, thank you. Now we're move on to Director Barnum.
Thank you. The Aberdeen Parks Board met last week, and they approved the requests um for use of motorized jet skis, uh ATVs, and camping at a designated area at Lake Aberdeen for the competitors. Uh, the date that I have on there is kind of right, it's actual setup on Friday, May ninth. And the event will be on Saturday, May tenth, and Sunday, May eleventh, and it is free and open to the public. Uh, the Parks Department and the Public Works Department, because it, the lake property is owned by the Water Department, will be working with the event organizer, Dan Lindgren, uh to prepare for the event. And Dan is here this evening, I don't know if you have any questions about the jet ski event? Yes, Councilmember Ellis?
I was wondering if we need a permit from Department of Fish and Wildlife?
No.
Or the Department of Ecology that is often interested in water bodies?
Not that I'm aware of, no. They hold the same event on Vance Creek.
I can speak for that, Liz.
Yeah.
I've been putting on jet ski events in Washington, Oregon, Idaho for eighteen years. Um, and typically, when you have
Could you come up?
Yeah.
Use the microphone.
On a privately-owned body of water, um their Department of Ecology doesn't really get involved in that sort of thing. It's like, so you could designate that lake permanently a motorized lake if you chose to, and you wouldn't need Department of Ecology or um, you know, any of those state agencies or fed- federal agencies to allow you to do that. If you're gonna go start digging and taking, you know, land away or uh disturbing more than just, just uh jet skis in the water or a motor in the water, um then you would probably have to go that route. But um in all of my time doing events all over the place, I've done about sixty different events in different parts of um all over western, the western United States, we don't, Department of Ecology has never been involved in that. It's just, that's just below their level of their, their, I guess, threshold of what they would need.
We have to see shoreline erosion um from the wave action of those boats or from people tucking up to the shoreline with their
Um, the area where we launched from, you might notice a little something there, but I wouldn't call it damage. You know, maybe disturbed a little bit, um but, but I wouldn't call it any sort of damage. Um, I suppose if you come to the event this first time around, so you can kind of see what it, what it's like, you'll, you'll get a better understanding of it. Um, but really, it's actually, we've done a lot of testing before and after events, and that's where I think water quality and um and the aeration of the water actually is a good thing. It's difficult to explain that uh to people that don't really understand it. Um, but, but it actually is good for the lake to aerate it a little bit. Um, it helps with algae control and things like that. One weekend is not gonna do much for it, uh but it's certainly not gonna hurt anything like, um that we definitely took them into consideration. We want to be able to have these events all over the place without damaging the areas that we go to. Um, and so, you know, safety number one, and then also the environment are two major components of what we look at when we're doing these events. Yeah. Any other questions before I step back? Thank you.
I will say that um myself and the Public Works Director are both really excited about the event. They could have up to a city or sixty competitors from all over the Pacific Northwest that will be coming uh to stay in Aberdeen. So we're excited to have it, and if all goes well, we're hoping that they're gonna come back to Aberdeen and continue to grow. And then I also wanted to thank our volunteer groups that volunteered on President's Day last month. Uh, the first group was the Moore Wright Group in that photo. They were at Stewart's Park and San Ben Park. And then the next group um was the Aberdeen High School Skills USA. And they were over at Finch Park picking up garbage, and I was out there with them in the morning, it was cold. So I appreciated everybody coming out that day. And then the last group that was um out on that day was the Grace Harbor Conservation District. They planted native plants along the shoreline at Zalasko Park to help with uh shoreline bank stabilization. So I wanted to thank them all for coming out and volunteering in our parks.
Where all the little flags are?
Yeah, yes, that is to try to keep the park staff from mowing over all of the new vegetation. Because they didn't do the best job at Kurt Cobain, so now we're flagging it and then reminding everybody to not mow it over. Thank you.
Mayor, I have one more um thing to add. Uh, it appears that Councilmember Allen, his um microphone isn't working, but he has sent a text uh for me to relay to all of you. Um, it sounds like Superintendent Green told him um that they don't know what they will do right now with the existing spaces. Um, and I'm assuming that that means the schools, after um the new schools are built, they could be repurposed for the district, sold to a potential buyer, or may, maybe some other option will arise through the process. Um, I'd also like to mention that the superintendents have requested, um they are very excited about uh Councilmember Allen's uh membership on the council. And so they would like to come in and deliver a presentation and give all of you an update on uh what's going on with the school, uh the new schools. So um that will be in either the next meeting or the following meeting in in March, probably the March twenty-sixth, thank you, Becca.
Thank you, Councilperson Allen. Your report, okay, yeah, go ahead, Director Sanders.
I was asked to speak briefly on the lead inventory form that was sent out to all the homes, all the accounts. Um, there's no action needed on that, there's been some, some, I guess, confusion. That is our form, we, we sent that in, we, that, we had to send that out to the public as a penalty for getting it in late. We did a, a mass import of our data from last year, and it came across corrupted. So they ended up having to do each account individually and verify each one. So it, it took about ten times as long as it should have taken. So they missed it by about, they were, I guess they submitted it about a month late. And as our penalty, a slap on our hand, is that we had to send our, send our form out to the public to announce that we were late and that, and to show that we were compliant now. So it also got in the consumer um uh report that comes out later. And um so now we're compliant and everything's good.
Anything else? The directors? Okay. So now we'll go on to a request for council action. Let's see, Finance Vice Chair Gaitan.
We have a request recommending the city authorize, city council authorize the mayor to sign the contract amendments with the Harbor Architects, extending the project term to May second, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Is there any discussion on it? All in favor of extending the Harbor Architects' contract through project term of May second, twenty twenty-five? Have all in favor? opposed? Thank you. Okay, uh Public Safety's gonna be uh gonna stand here. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so Public Safety Chair Per Chinney's asked me to do tonight's reading. And of course, I didn't bring my glasses, because I didn't think I'd have to read tonight, but I think I can wing it pretty well. That's pretty good, so anyway. Um, some updates from the Aberdeen Police and Fire Departments, real quick. Um, Aberdeen Police Department um has provided us, the committee, with some statistics. Um, do these, chief of these also gonna go out to the council, or can we make these available to the council?
Yeah, I could do that. I could just email the whole document, it's easier for you.
Because there's a, um, he showed a, a time period window of six months um from uh August eleventh of twenty twenty-three to February eleventh of twenty twenty-four, and then compared that to the same period a year later, August of twenty twenty-four to February twenty twenty-five. Uh, different types of calls. Different types of call types in the city. Notable increases were all criminal citations up thirty-six percent and trespass up twenty-two percent. Direct possession citations were up fifty-seven percent. And I think that really is a reflection of the change in law, isn't it, that we had?
Yeah, that actually went into effect on August fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three, so it's been in effect for about a year and a half now.
Yeah, so they're, they're doing well in working on that. And then overall, the total calls were down three percent during the comparative periods from twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five. They have ongoing testing for one police officer. They have one vacancy and one conditional on background. And the police services officer is still ongoing. Establish a list and record specialist. They have two vacancies that were recently established. And then you want to congratulate Aberdeen Police Department's twenty twenty-four Employee of the Year, Police Officer Gabe Tarnowski, who came to APD in October of twenty twenty-two from Cosmopolis PD. He's also a member of the Aberdeen Regional Special Response Team and is an acting supervisor on patrol. For the Fire Department, comparing January of this year with January of twenty twenty-four, a number of calls were basically the same. Five hundred and seventy incidents or call stats for January this year as compared to last year, the same amount as compared to five hundred and seventy-one in twenty twenty-three. So there's really no difference in the number of call statistics. Overdose responses in January, twenty this year as compared to twenty last year, and they average about twenty a month, so it's pretty flat. But, you know, there's still some activity there. The city is also looking into options for a mass public notification system to use in the event of a major disaster or emergency, as well as for notifications of utility outages within the city. And they currently have one staff vacancy. Under Public Safety tonight, we have four reports and one resolution. Under Report A, we have a request recommending the City Council approve the inter-local cooperative purchasing agreement between the City of Aberdeen and the City of Hoquam for the purchase of a new ambulance in twenty twenty-six. I move we adopt this report.
Good. Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Tena, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
All right. Next, we have a request recommending the City Council authorize the Fire Chief to execute the contract for services between the Aberdeen School District Number Five and the City of Aberdeen for the summer fire and EMS program. And I move that we adopt this request.
Second.
There's been a first and a second to approve this request. Is there any discussion? Councilperson Seedorf?
I just wanted to note that the school district has agreed to reimburse us to, I think, six thousand dollars this year, which is great because in prior years they haven't been able to do that or it's been nominal. And so now we're actually getting some additional funding, which will help. And we hope to keep this program ongoing. It's really good. It helps give students an opportunity to kind of interact with the Fire Department, see what different jobs are, how they do what they do, and see if they want to hopefully become a member of the Fire Department here and stay in Aberdeen and provide services in our city. So I think it's a really good program.
Is there any other discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Next, we have a request recommending the City Council authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the City of Aberdeen and WKR Structural Engineers for a structural analysis of the city's fire department facilities. I move that we adopt this request.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this?
It's WRK.
WRK? What is WRK? It's a company.
No, you said WKR.
Oh, did I say WKR? WKRP? Hey, I'm trying to read here. I'm dyslexic. Is there any more discussion? Tena? All in favor? Oppose?
Thank you for keeping me honest, go straight on this. Okay, next and last on the request, we have a request recommending the City Council authorize the Fire Chief to execute the affiliation agreement between the City of Aberdeen and Tacoma Community College to allow for the Aberdeen Fire Department to be a clinical ride site for TCC's paramedic program. And I move that we adopt this request.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this request? Councilperson Seedorf?
Again, briefly, this is a great cooperative agreement and helps to the, the people participating in TCC's paramedic program to actually get field work and see how things go. And then for us to also have the opportunity to evaluate some potential candidates and see if we can encourage them to join our department. So I think it's a great program.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All right. Opposed?
And finally, we have a resolution tonight, a resolution authorizing the city administrator, police chief, and fire chief to explore the design and construction of new public facilities. I move that we adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this resolution? Councilperson Ellis?
Will this be looking at existing sites for for the construction or also looking at new sites?
Both. This will be exploring the most efficient and effective way to get new public safety facilities.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? All right. Oppose? Passes.
It's the Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero two.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Public Works with Chairperson Francine.
All right. We've got a public hearing tonight, a report and resolution. That's the date set for the public hearing of the annual project plan for the Transportation Benefit District for the year twenty twenty-five. I'm going to open this public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? No question. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilperson Beedley.
Just to clarify, so this is approving-
Never mind, never mind. Sorry. Okay. Okay, now is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Does this mean we open the public hearing?
Public hearing is now open. Is there anybody who'd like to comment on this? Please state your name and word and keep it down to three minutes in.
My name is Darren Bates. I'm from Ward Two. But I'm going to be discussing Ward Five. I met with Councilman Francie. I tried to get ahold of Councilwoman Perchinie. I sent an email to Councilman Sador, the Chief of Police, and Representative-
This is on the Transportation Benefit District Plan for twenty twenty-five. We will have a public-
And I tried to get Representative Walsh involved. I feel it's a public safety issue on State Street and I do believe it's South Jefferson behind the Bowlin Alley. There's a lot of foot traffic back there. And a lot of you know, people aren't slowing down in that area. There's no stop sign, nothing from AM PM to under the bridge. There's a painted crosswalk. And I talked to Rick Singer tonight, and I understand it's a money thing, but I'm pushing for a lighted crosswalk because the tribal center has employees at six o'clock in the morning, starting the day after cross that street. And as we know, it's way dark. But even in the daylight, people aren't slowing down. I, I was talking to Francie. We saw the speed sign and people were doing thirty-five, forty miles an hour back there. And then a week after I talked to Francie, I saw a pickup almost take out a city vehicle in the rear because it was flying down State Street. And so he had to be doing it sixty. So I'm trying to get as many of you on board as I can. Like I said, I do believe this is a safety issue. I know it's not my ward, but I think it will benefit the city. There is a lot of foot traffic back there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Chrysanthemum. I'm from Ward Four, and I just want to thank you for your support of the Railroad Quiet Zone Study. I think, I think it's, it's gonna take a long time. It's a big project, but I think it'll bring a lot of satisfaction to folks who live in Aberdeen and Hoquam. Probably raise some property values, certainly improve the sleep patterns for families and children in the city. And whether you can hear it or not, it's a benefit to the city and generally. So thanks for considering it and being on board. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion from the audience? Take the motion.
I'm moving to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, public hearing is now closed. Continuing with reports.
Okay, we have a request recommending the City Council authorize the purchase and installation of three air compressors for the water treatment plant with the budget not to exceed a hundred and twenty thousand. I move we accept this report.
Is the move in second. Is there any discussion on this?
Under discussion, it's replacing three of the air compressors that backwash the membrane water filters in the water treatment plant. They've been, all three of them have been used the same amount of time, but one of them is actually out of service right now. And the repair quote is more than buying a replacement. Unfortunately, there is only a budget of fifty thousand for machinery for the department, and it will need a supplemental budget to fix the hills.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All in favor? Oppose?
Passes.
Thank you. And now our resolutions. We have a regulation setting the date of February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five for a public hearing to adopt a two thousand twenty-five stormwater management plan. I'm going to leave you accept this resolution.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Tena? All in favor of approving this res- resolution?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes.
This will be Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero three.
All right, thank you. And now we'll move on to special committee items with Council President Ford.
We have two public hearings on this side today. This is the date set for the public hearing on Bill twenty-five dash zero two and ordinance renaming Title Sixteen to be Historic Preservation, repealing Chapter sixteen point oh eight relating to short flats and repealing Chapter sixteen point sixteen relating to mobile home parks. I move we open this public hearing.
Tena? Been moved in second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Oppose? Public hearing is now open. Anybody like to make a comment on this? Tena?
Move we close the public hearing?
All in favor? Opposed? Public hearing is now closed.
Next, we have another public hearing. This is the date set for public hearing on Bill twenty-five dash zero three and ordinance repealing Chapter seventeen point five zero related to historic preservation, repealing Chapter sixteen point oh four related to the comprehensive plan and adopting a new Chapter sixteen point oh four related to the city's historic preservation code. I open, we, I move we open this public hearing.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
Oppose? Public hearing is now open. Anybody'd like to come up and just talk about this subject?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, all in favor of closing public hearing?
Aye.
Oppose? Public hearing is now closed. Thank you.
We have one report, a request recommending that the City Council approve the deaccession of items from the museum collection. And we adopt this request.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor of accepting this request?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes.
Okay, we have a second reading of Bill twenty-five dash zero two and ordinance renaming Title Sixteen to be Historic Preservation, repealing Chapter sixteen oh eight relating to short flats and repealing Chapter sixteen point sixteen relating to mobile home parks. I move we accept this reading.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the second reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Passes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, consider the second reading the third, and place Bill twenty-five dash zero two into a vote for final passage.
Second. Been moved in seconded to place this bill into final passage. All in favor. Is there any discussion?
And this will be a roll call vote?
Roll call, okay.
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yeah.
Gaken?
Yes.
Hodgkin?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Here, yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Perchinie?
Yes.
Seedorf?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes, Mr. Mayor. This will be ordinance six, seven, two, three.
Thank you.
We have a second reading of Bill twenty-five dash zero three and ordinance repealing Chapter seventeen point five oh related to historic preservation, repealing Chapter sixteen point oh four related to the comprehensive plan and adopting a new Chapter sixteen point oh four related to the city's historic preservation code. I move we adopt this reading.
Second. Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Tena, all in favor of adopting the second reading?
Aye.
Oppose?
Mr. Mayor, I would again like to make a motion to suspend the rules, consider the second reading the third, place Bill twenty-five dash zero three into a vote for final passage.
Second. Is there any discussion? Did we get a roll call on this?
Ellis?
Yes.
Francie?
Yeah.
Gaken?
Yes.
Hodgkin?
Yes.
Lawrence?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Perchinie?
Yes.
Seedorf?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes, Mr. Mayor. This will be ordinance six, seven, two, four.
Thank you.
Lastly, in this group, we have a resolution adopting the mission, vision, and goals for twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-six created through the Strategic Planning Workshop. I move we adopt this resolution.
Second. Is there any discussion on this resolution? Tena, all in favor of adopting this resolution?
Aye.
Oppose? Passes.
This will be Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero four.
We have two appointments. First, we have a request to appoint Code Enforcement Officer DJ Cox as a Commissioner to the Civil Service Commission. I move we adopt this request.
Is there any discussion on this? All in favor of appointing Code Enforcement Officer DJ Cox as a Commissioner to the Civil Service Commission? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
And next, we have a request to appoint Deb Debochamp, apologies if that's incorrect, to the Aberdeen Library Board. I move we adopt this request.
Second. Been moved in seconded to adopt Deb Debochamp? The Library Board? Is there any discussion? Councilperson Seedorf?
I know we had discussed at our last council meeting that it'd be really nice to have people here who are being asked, who are suggesting being appointed to different boards. I think we're all familiar with Officer, or, with DJ Cox. I do want to then, because I don't see Deb Debochamp here. I know she's a neighbor of mine. She's in my ward, and she's an excellent choice. I think she'd be really a fine addition.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Welcome on Booker.
Last, under my list here would be our amendment to the agenda, which would be a discussion regarding changing the day of the week of council meetings. This is just an open, brief discussion. It's been brought to my attention that Wednesdays may not be the most accessible for everyone that sits- This is just an open, brief discussion. It's been brought to my attention that Wednesdays may not be the most accessible for everyone that sits at this table, and I just want to make sure that. We're open and transparent and flexible if needed.
Okay. I have already. Worked my whole schedule around Wednesday, and I have six employees that have worked their whole schedules around Wednesday. So this would change the whole dynamic for them if we were to change it. So I I prefer that it just stays the same. But that's just me, and I'm still willing to perform if needed. So.
Just for the record, I have no personal preference either way. I just want to make sure that everyone here is being, their time is being respected.
I have a conflict often on Wednesday for, I teach early morning seminary, and we have meetings on Wednesday at the same time the council's on, my dad black. So it would, it'd be nice if I didn't have a conflict, but that's just me. So, but I would prefer a Tuesday. Later. But then, there's things that if we made it on Thursday, give people more time to get stuff to us, so. But I would be happy to make the change, so I wouldn't have a conflict.
Councilperson Taylor?
Yeah, I'd be open. Wednesdays are kind of a challenging night sometimes. And gonna be having some conflicts likely coming up on Wednesday nights. So I'd be open to a Monday, a Tuesday, a Thursday, definitely not a Friday, not a weekend, but, you know, we want to make the change.
Councilperson Ellis?
I've, I've planned all my meetings around Wednesdays. And it would be a real hardship to juggle. The other existing meetings. If this were to move from Wednesday night.
I know where everybody else, well, Councilmember Allison, Councilmember Perachini. I'm semi-flexible, but I have kind of built everything around Wednesdays, so all my other meetings are not on Wednesdays. The other component of it too is, Wednesday meetings have been going on for forever, and that's what the public is used to, and so I'm a little concerned with that, but. Flexible. That's, but preference for Wednesdays.
Councilperson Mackey?
I just want to state that I'm not available on Thursday nights, because I have concerts and Wednesdays have been fine for me.
Okay, and. I like, I like Monday. But definitely not Tuesday, because I'd be shocked for that, but Wednesdays are fine. Okay, anybody else?
I would have to renegotiate my co-parenting plan to them. It's a little bit of a. So I prefer Wednesday.
Sounds like most of us are kind of happy with Wednesday.
I was gonna say, it sounds like the general consensus says my schedule is wrapped around this, and that's what I. Anticipated. Mine is also the same way. I don't schedule anything any Wednesday after four o'clock. So, thank you for being open.
But I'd like to reiterate it. We could just get rid of all meetings on Tuesday. I'll be happy. Just kidding. Okay, is there any more discussion on this? Okay. Now we'll go back to public comments. If there are anybody in the audience who'd like to come and do a comment? Same thing, name and word in three minutes for last.
I'm Ruth Hamilton from Hoquam, but I feel really connected to Aberdeen. And I just wanted to say that I'm very impressed with all of you, and I want to say thank you for all that you do for your community.
Yeah.
I'm Kim McCollum from Ward Five. I've been here a couple times. I actually ended up in the ER last night for six hours with continued health problems because of my neighborhood. I come home from the ER with fifteen people smoking under my bedroom window, and I kindly asked them to please move along. I said, you're affecting my health, and they said, we don't have to. I have fed these people meals during this cold weather. I've given them hot chocolate, hot apple cider, who's ever out there trying to. Be kind to them, and this is what I'm getting. And I've also been told, if I don't get healthy, I will lose my job. And all they said to me was, well, then you'll be on the street with us. Because I care for, I'm a caregiver in homes with our vulnerable population, and they don't want me in their homes sick. And with a viral infection, you're contagious until your symptoms are gone. But it's affecting my heart, my lungs, my health, and. I know you guys are trying. I saw the report you put out, you know, what the police are doing. I see them there, but forty-five minutes after the police leave, they're back. And I just, I mean, my concern is, what do I do if I lose my job?
Just for everybody's. For the good of the order, we are looking to put lights down in that alley, more lights. We're working on that right now.
They love the light.
Yeah.
They love the light.
We're also, we're also working on, I'm just letting you know.
You told me, I know.
We're also putting cameras, they're running wires for cameras, so we're really trying to work within the law to help you.
And, and I understand that, I'm just. I'm still the one, I'm still the victim, and I still.
We're working. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just have, I don't really know what I'm allowed to ask, if anything. But I didn't understand what the historic preservation changed to sixteen sixteen related to mobile home parks is exactly. And then the other question I had is, when you have that thing at the Aberdeen Lake, are we sure that the fish aren't spawning at that time? Because I know that that's one of the reasons that. Fishing in boats is allowed and isn't allowed in a lot of places as if there's spawning going on. So those are my two questions.
Director Scott will talk to you afterwards about the changes that were made in the. That you mentioned about on the agenda. Director, yeah, Director Lisa Scott will talk to you after the meeting today, if you have time.
Anything else? All right. Ain't none. We'll go for the good of the order. Does anybody have anything good to add? Councilperson Morris?
Actually, I just have a quick question, and I don't know if Councilperson Perachini or Ruth could answer this. We've been hearing, I think it was supposed to come through the Homelessness Response Committee, the drug loitering enforcement. Language. Is there an update on that? Is that going to be coming before the council?
The difficulty that we're having right now with the drug loitering is that it's really, we really wanted to apply to the one alley that we have, and it's behind a subsonic clinic right now. That's being challenged in the city of Marysville, who's having similar issues that we're having. Kind of, I think it's the issue that they're having, and I think Chief Green can talk a little bit more about this, is that. We're kind of. Having to determine if people are clients, are we, you know, there's, there's some, some gray areas to enforcing loitering if they say, I'm a, I'm a client, I'm waiting for my appointment. So those are the types of things. One of the things that we are considering that I've given to Chief Green last week is something called the SODA, which is the Stay Out of Drug Area. That the city of Seattle is doing. And I'm asking, I've asked him and our legal team to look at this and see how we can apply that to the, to our city. In the city of Seattle, it is applied to commercial areas, so we would be having to create it or to, to design it in a way that would apply to residential areas, because there are a lot of like. Loopholes that people could potentially find for not having to create it. This would also ask, this would also have us work hand in hand with the courts. To, and our prosecutor to make recommendations to include something like this. What this law essentially does is if a person is convicted in the past of some sort of drug conviction. And then they're, they go before a court again for the same, a similar issue. The judge can say, you are now part of a SODA program. You can't go into these specified areas that the council would, you know, outline. And, and you have to stay out of this area for four months, or whatever the, whatever the issue is without like having to be arrested or, you know, and if they are found in that, or re-arrested in the same area, they would serve up to a year in jail. There's like a lot of fines that go with that. So that's something. It also is that there's another program that's a SOAP program, which is like based more on prostitution. So again. We are trying everything that we can to kind of address the issue in like very creative ways and paying attention to what larger cities are doing and. What they, you know, if they're receiving any legal challenges or anything like that, and to design something that fits Aberdeen. So that's, that's the current update on the loitering law. We've also explored like even extending the sit-lie law to include that particular area as well, which I think, according, you know, in my conversations with Chief Green, he thinks that that, that might be our best bet.
And then, thank you. Could you tell me what compliance has been like with the clinic that's in that area?
Great. You know, they hired a security outfit that has been able to enforce and move people along from loitering from in front. Again, the alley seems to be the greatest issue. We're also looking to install cameras that would require us to install fiber into the alleyway. We also, the PUD won't allow us to put cameras. On their poles, so we would have to work with the private, one of the residential owners to see if we could put a camera basically on their. Like one of the apartment buildings or one of the residencies there. So we have a lot of things in motion. We also, Chief Green has also talked about installing a flock camera to keep track of the vehicles that are going in and out of the alley. Our concern is, is that once we put all this infrastructure up, they're gonna possibly move to another alley. And then we would have to, again, move all the infrastructure to then, you know, wherever the next place is going to be. So we want to find an approach that's sustainable, that's enforceable. And that deters the activity that's happening and collecting in the alley.
Chief, could you turn yours off for a second? Thank you. We can hear you breathing.
I have one final question.
All my brain.
I was just curious if you had had anyone from the school district, particularly the high school, reaching out to you about any issues they're having, since they're in such close proximity.
Yeah, I, I've spoken with Chief Green and myself, I've spoken with the. The superintendents regarding the issue, right behind the superintendent office, and which is a direct shot to the alley down where Ms. McCullough lives. They've had activity, but nothing that's like lingering, and they've been very communicative with us. They've had issues with the Salvation Army folks across the street and the collection of people there. And then we've also, and we do have a meet, an upcoming meeting with the St. Mary's to discuss the activity that happens in the alley where the school district parking lot is. So, yeah, we've been, we've been, and, you know, I'm working with Director Barna, and we placed trash cans strategically where, you know, in those areas where. You know, a lot of the trash comes from St. Mary's, and the people are just kind of throwing their trash, their food waste, and from the Salvation Army, their food waste. So we've really been trying to. Stay on top of this on, not, not just like the collection of people, but just the activity around, you know, these community resource groups, and the impact that it's having on not only the school district, but the residents as well.
Thank you.
So DJ Cox are Code Enforcement Officers here tonight too, but one of the things that we've been doing is, we have posted all the residents in the neighborhood as well as sent notification to owners. To get their stuff cleaned up, and we're starting to track on. On nuisance abatement right now, specifically chronic nuisance, to see if we can't get some of the owners' attentions and look at maybe even shutting some of the houses down. It, it, you know, all that, by doing that, we know that's an option, but it will displace people, so we're being very cautious as we do that, but we are starting to track that.
Great, thank you.
Councilperson Seedorf? Regarding the issue about people who may be patients or clients of the clinic. Cannot we either enforce or make it a condition of their conditional use permit that they have to notify all their clients that they must. Either waiting for an appointment, they have to wait either in front of that building or in their parking lot instead of in the alley.
Yes, and they have done that. And, and, and because they've been able to enforce it now with better security, and like with the city, we check in with them every thirty days. And to kind of like, and, 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 yeah, and so, yeah, they are doing that currently. So again, the clinic is not the problem. It's the activity behind the alley, and. Those people are coming from all over the city. We also had a vacant building on the corner. Joe's Deli was vacant. It looks like a new business will be coming in, as well as some possible like residents above. So with the activity and the lighting and, you know, just the store activity, we're hoping that it will deter a lot of the nefarious activity that's happening there.
Mr. Mayor, they're dead something.
Yes.
So we should have something for next council meeting. That's our goal. Legal team, we met with them last week to come up with some sort of plan, as Ruth had mentioned. You know, there's pretty big constitutional concerns when we're talking about officers detaining people, taking away their rights and their freedoms, move about, while we try to determine what they're doing. And specifically when it's related to residential neighborhood compared to like a downtown business district. Most of the loitering drug laws, the sodas, the soaps and such are all focused on residential, commercial areas and not residential neighborhoods. So they're kind of trying to figure out a way to make that specific to an area. That still allows occupants and residents to have people come and go as they please, because they certainly have a right to do that. And try to make something that's enforceable, something that, that still works for us.
Councilperson Seedorf? And I know we've discussed this. One last comment or suggestion. It would seem to me, can't we designate that alley as some kind of special nuisance area and say, no one can congregate in that alley at any time? And, yeah, they'll probably go somewhere else, but they've been used to congregating in that alley. I don't know what else to do right now.
Yeah, that's part of what we were hoping for, but the challenge again is enforcement. If somebody's walking across the alley to head to their uncle's house. We have legal authority to stop them and detain them and interview them while they're doing that. That's kind of the challenge. We talked about putting a restriction on a residential neighborhood.
No, not if somebody's walking down the alley. If somebody's stopped, they're hanging out, and they've spent time.
The challenge is.
Especially with groups of.
Yeah, the challenge for us, though, is they move when they see us. So they're not stopped anymore. As soon as we pull up a patrol car, then they start moving. So that, that, that gets to be a really fine, specific thing that we're trying to accomplish. Because we are taking away their ability to move, and we're gonna put them in handcuffs and do that route. And we have to be very, very sure of what we're doing and making sure that we're not gonna get sued.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right, Chief, thank you for what you guys are doing down there, too. We appreciate it. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
I have a couple State of the Cities report, twenty twenty-five report that AWC sent. There was multiple, I have two left, so if anyone would like them, I could start the beginning.
Okay. Thank you. We can have a motion from somebody.
Second.
All right, all in favor? Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming. We appreciate your time.